Will the Secretary take the roll?
Alderman Lazara.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Murray Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
For Mr. President, third, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of April 11th, 2013.
A move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Stay.
Motion carries. Now we have a report and recommendation, East Potter Street rezoning. Mr. Forrest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I was preparing this memo, it seemed prudent to at least go forward at a committee meeting and have this topic be open for discussion as opposed to staff actually making a recommendation of what we need to do over there. There's an area of the city along East Potter Street that is roughly from Central Avenue east to Pine Lane that historically has always been zoned either manufacturing or now with our new zoning classifications, it's zoned industrial, which allows a lot of uses that you wouldn't typically see in an area next to a residential area. And it's kind of been a lot of issues with those buildings over the years as far as compliance with zoning requirements, as far as compliance to property maintenance standards. And I think it's time, it's been brought to my attention by a couple of the elected officials, that it's really time for Wooddale to kind of zero in on this area and come up with a solution that's going to work best not only for the city of Wooddale but also for the property owners. So maybe what we'll do is we'll start with a slideshow, there's some photos here that Alderman Lazara took probably about a month or six weeks ago with some existing conditions. And this is typical as to what these properties might look like at the end of a winter season. They kind of speak for themselves. But this is looking west from probably the Ash Street Crossing, I believe. There's a contractor's yard there. And you can see by the end of the winter, these areas are looking pretty poor. One of the biggest issues here as far as aesthetics is this is basically the eastern gateway into the city for anybody riding the Metro train. This is kind of their first view of Wooddale when they're coming into town. It doesn't really present the picture that I think we would like people to see. So after these photos were taken, we had our code enforcement officer, Joe Johnson, go over, talk to these owners again because, as I say, through the years, this is a constant enforcement problem. Several of these property owners have been issued citations in the past. Some of these property owners have been taken to court to get their sites cleaned up and to force them to operate within the allowable parameters of the zoning ordinance. So this is kind of what it looks like now. The area's been cleaned up, yet again, some of these uses are still not the most attractive. There's the contractor's yard, stuff has been neatly stacked. So again, technically, these properties are in compliance to the zoning ordinance and to the property maintenance code. But they don't present that welcoming of a photo when you first come into town. So the options that we have for this area, and this is something that's been talked about and never really pushed forward before, the first option would be to rezone this property to either a residential zoning or a commercial zoning, something that would not allow the types of uses that are there now. Rezoning an area like that and forcing people to change the uses of their building or basically tear their buildings down and build something that would be in compliance to the new zoning standards, I think is going to be a major headache for the city, aside from the fact that we were going to have to have an amortization period, and I would think a minimum of a 10-year amortization period for people to change these uses in the buildings. It may even be longer than that. And at that, at what point would we, if people refuse to comply, you know, do we extend the amortization period or do we then start taking these people to court? I mean, at what point does it become a taking, so to speak, of their property? These are all city attorney questions. But that would be one alternative. Another alternative would be to work with the property owners, Metro, and the city, and maybe go forward with a very proactive landscaping project. Go with planting some sort of tree line along the rear of these properties, between the properties and the Metro tracks, with the type of vegetation that would provide screening and would keep its foliage all year, arborvitae or some sort of an evergreen tree. Plant those, get something to, I mean, arborvitae, as Alderman Roy Wesley knows, I mean, there's probably 50 different varieties, they all grow to different heights, they grow to different widths, but arborvitae are typically used to effectively build a vegetative screening on areas where it's needed. So that might be one solution to talk about. The other thing would be to, you know, just continue to aggressively enforce the property maintenance code, which will force the people to keep their property at least neat and somewhat orderly, yet you're still going to see some of the things like this contractor's yard. That's an allowable use, as long as stuff is stacked neatly, they can do that. So I really just wanted to bring this matter to the council's attention, see what kind of ideas you as elected officials might have, and basically get some direction for staff as to what you want us to pursue.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
John, we had those problems with, when we had the problems with the signs, and it was a major problem. Can't we have them put up a fence, a decorative fence or something like that to block that? And use it as a cost sharing with the city and maybe use it for advertising too?
Mr. Forrest?
Having the property owners put up a privacy fence would definitely be one direction we could take. This last photo is the back of one of the recycling businesses, as you can see, they do have a fence up, yet it still does not effectively screen it. I mean, the highest fence that we would allow unless we wanted to make special consideration for this area would be an eight-foot-high fence. If the purpose of going forward with this project is to improve the looks of this area, excuse me, for people riding the train, we're going to need some kind of a barrier taller than eight feet because you're just going to see right over it, then we're not really going to accomplish that much, in my opinion.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Well, first of all, I don't know if I'm in favor of rezoning this because you can rezone it all you want, but the point is, those people are still entitled, you just can't throw them out. I mean, we rezoned the area before and those, some of those businesses are still there, so rezoning is out for me. The option that I have with this is, and in a way, I'm kind of in favor of putting some bushes along there, but the problem is that I talked to Mr. Forrest is how much is it by the railroad crossing of easement that they're going to have to have, you know? We're going to have to contact Metro because I don't know how close these trees or whatever, and if those branches go on their track area, that's my concern on that. In the meantime, until this council makes up their mind which direction they would do, I would highly suggest that staff keeps hounding them to clean that up. The other thing is, if we gave them citations and we appear in court, once they get one citation, or once they get one letter, and they clean it up, and it comes back to, you go back to a month later, to me, it ain't another letter. Just issue the ticket, appear in court. These letters that we have done in the past to businesses, we give them a letter, they clean it up for 38, then we go back to square one and we issue them another letter and give them another chance to clean up. Far my concern is if it ain't done after first letter, and it's clean, and they cite, it's a waste of our time to keep giving them letters, they clean up for 38. Hit the book, win, done. We've been trying to clean this up for, like you said, for years. Enough is enough. So I'm in favor of doing bushes if that's what we do. The fence option is something on the table, maybe, I don't know. My concern is the Metro. My concern is also, I believe there's a drainage ditch back there because I believe it did show in those pictures, a drainage ditch. I believe Frank Zaro, those pictures did show that there was a drainage ditch. And if you look at some of those pictures, some of that stuff's already in the drainage ditch, so why are they storing it in the drainage ditch? For flooding issues? Is that on their property or is that on our right-of-way in the rear?
Mr. Forrest?
The property lines do extend pretty much to the ditch line there.
Is that our ditch line?
No, it's Metro's.
Well, again.
And I have had contact with Metro over the last couple of days. I've talked to one of the contacts that I made while we were doing the train station and approached him with, you know, the alternative of putting landscaping trees and shrubs in there. He seemed to think that that would be allowable by Metro, and he even indicated to me that there was a chance that Metro would grant us an easement right along the edge of their right-of-way to do that. My thought is, depending on the direction that I get from the council this evening, what I'd like to do is actually put a meeting together with all the property owners in that affected area, get together with them at City Hall here some evening, explain what's going on, the concerns that the city has, and find out if they're going to be willing to partner with us if we decide to go with the landscaping route, and maybe either give us a couple of feet off the rear of their property, if we can get a couple of feet on Metro's. My thought is, plant, if we're going to be able to go with some kind of vegetation on there, plant it right on the property lines. Get the property owners involved where they agree to water these trees until they get established, and kind of bring them in the loop on it as opposed to having a very adversarial relationship with them. Try it and see how it works. If it fails, then we can just hold their feet to the fire.
Alderman Lazara?
John, you know where I stand on this. I mean, the eyesore, even after, you know, the cleanup, is still pretty bad. The trees, you explained to me that we might be getting trees on a deal that there's some developer that owes us trees. So the cost to tree sounds pretty minimal to me. I like the trees because we're Wooddale, not FenceDale, so I would prefer definitely trees. But there's other issues there, John, and, you know, that's why, you know, again, I don't want to rezone anyone. But the other day, I walked less than a block, and I counted 60 cars within a block full of gasoline, oil, bad cars. Cars that are in such bad shape, are they holding the gas or is it dripping on the ground? There's 60 cars in less than a block. Three o'clock in the morning, I had people calling me saying, Frank, they're delivering a car three o'clock in the morning, the lights are on, there's guys talking, you can hear the... So even though, yeah, my big concern is the way it looks, my other concern are the 60 cars. And if I remember right, last year, one of those buildings not too far from that caught on fire. You know, that area scares me, guys. It was that by Ash and Irving, near Reedie Electric, right? That building?
Yeah, correct, that was a building on Irving Park.
Yeah, that area scares me. Scares me a lot. Too many cars in just such a short span, full of gasoline and oil.
Mr. Forrest?
And that's one of the issues that are kind of inherent with this industrial zoning. It allows car auto body shops, and I think we have two or three of them there. It allows car repair shops where we have a couple of those. As far as somebody delivering a car at 3:00 in the morning and making a lot of racket, if I was that resident, I would, my next call would have been to the police department.
Yeah, well, it was to me. And, you know, so again, I'm not looking to rezone, but I'm looking to see if we can stop that type of thing here, you know, with delivering cars at 3:00 in the morning. Is there an ordinance that we can look at if we already have those on the books?
I'm not aware of one, but I can check and see what restriction we might have on that.
And then, I don't know if there's anything we can do about 60 cars that are bumper-to-bumper, door-to-door, within a block. You know, that, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to live across the street from that. And that's the problem, I mean, it's residential across the street from that. Something we inherited, so. I guess we really don't have a lot of questions, John, just, you know, a lot of comments about why, you know, we really need to look at that, besides that being our doorway. There's people that live across the street from junkyards.
Mr. Forrest?
Well, I mean, if we could get a consensus on how you want me to proceed, if at this point it seems like some sort of landscaping barrier would be the preferable way to go, I'll contact all the property owners there, try to put together a meeting here at City Hall, you know, 5:00, 6:00 o'clock, something like that, see how many of those property owners we can get in here. And I say, kind of get them invested in this, bring them into the loop, and try and work with them as partners. If it doesn't work, then we can always take out the big hammer, but...
Yeah.
Alderman Wesley?
Yeah, go ahead. John, I would think, bring the businesses in and talk about it with them and see if they come up with some ideas. I was just thinking too, Metro does spray their tracks with a chemical that kills vegetation on the stones and stuff, and if you use bushes or trees along their easement there, you might have, kill into trees with that very easily, so... But I don't know if you knew that or not.
No, and I'll check with Metro to find out, you know, how that would be impacted. I'm waiting for contact back from their engineering department. I've been talking to the public relations department, he's been talking to some of their staff. The last inquiry I had from him was he wanted geographically to know exactly the area we were talking about, so I emailed him that information earlier today, so.
I just don't want to plant bushes and then come by and spray and go buy bushes.
Alderman Winger?
Thank you. I am in favor of getting together with the business community. I do think it's the first step, the right approach, and looking at the landscaping, and I do agree that it's got to be something that will live there, you know, that is not going to get killed by whatever they're spraying, but let's work with the businesses, try and improve the appearance. And then also, is there a way to change the zoning so it only goes into effect after change of ownership of a business? And then the new owner would be subject to the new zoning, and then I'm thinking, once we put that in place, perhaps that we could start helping them move to other locations.
Mr. Forrest?
I will certainly find out from the city attorney. I have a meeting with Mary Dixon tomorrow morning about another matter, but I'll kind of run this by her as well.
Thank you.
John, let me throw in, I think there is a general consensus that we need to talk to the businesses and try to develop a plan, be proactive with them. And to Alderman Lazara's point, I think we need to look into the zoning. Even though it might be allowed to have junk cars there, there might be some issues. I know some sites, you're not allowed to store the gas in the tanks, the tanks have to be dried, there's got to be some other rules and regulations that come into play. They might not be a city ordinance, it could be a county ordinance or whatever, but as we're looking at this whole thing, let's look at it as a package, to see what we could do to clean up the screening part of it, and then look at how they're kind of being used, maybe to address some of the things that Alderman Lazara brought up. Is that enough information? I mean, you have direction then?
That'd keep me busy for a while.
All right. Thank you. Alderman Eugene Wesley, one more question.
That brings up a valid point. If there is gasoline stored out there and we're talking about, well, maybe we should also CC all our documents that are finding out there to the fire district and let the fire district, because I'm sure there's EPA standard that they have to obey by with those tanks and all that, because I don't know, but I think they should be involved in it too. Now that we brought up the bushes, and I just have one concern. Who's going to maintain these bushes? Who's going to trim these trees? We can't get a, we can't get Boom back there to trim them, or how are we going to trim these trees? I mean, if we're going to invest this money, I mean, how, is it going to be our liability? I mean, our responsibility, maintain them? And then, if that's the case, are we going to have to have a flag person on the railroad crossing area to trim these trees because we have a flag guy where we did the sidewalk by the railroad tracks? Or is that going to be a wave that we don't have to have a flag person?
These are all things we can look into, and I'll check that with Metro. And I would think before we would decide ultimately on what sort of tree or shrub or vegetation we would plant, we would consult with a landscape expert and find out. I'd like to get the lowest maintenance that's going to be the most effective on the screening, so...
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Forrest. Items for consideration for future meetings, Community Park Town Center Vision Plan, May 23rd, Lakota Group City of Wooddale Wayfinding and Signage Design Project, May 23rd, Amendment to Chapter 5, Article 1, Section 5.101 of the Municipal Code, May 23rd, and Approval for Staff for Minor Zoning Variations, May 23rd. So it sounds like May 23rd's going to be pretty busy. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Hot order, Public Health and Safety Judicial Committee. Let the record show that same people are present. Motion approved in minutes, April 11th, 2013. I make the formal motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Report and recommendation, business requests liquor license. Deputy Chief Murray, I mentioned to Chief Hesta that when I do my committee that I'll just turn it over to him, so... There you go.
I'm going to throw it back to you, then.
Let's see what you have.
Well, Alderman Wesley, in talking to Chief Hesta, we have no business to bring to the table this evening.
Well, we have the presenters, so staff really has no point, I mean, no presentation. So we had a group come in the last council meeting, they requested to come back with more information, so staff doesn't have anything to add. I think the presenters are here, though, but the question is, we have a liquor license request, and you have the staff report originally, and you guys asked the group to come back out, so they're here tonight.
Okay. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Is there one or two here tonight?
There's one for sure, two?
There is two here tonight, because there was only one listed on the agenda. It's a report recommends business license request for a liquor license. I think two, that's one.
E.S. licenses.
Yeah, it's plural, "S."
All right. So who's going to present? I mean, we already heard of one.
Well, I think they were, you requested them to come back, so they're here back today.
And do we have any, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Do we have update, who's the other business license requesting?
Well, that presenter's here as well, and she wasn't at the last meeting, so I'm assuming she's going to want to speak tonight, so...
A company called Daddies.
All right, so, who's going first?
Let, are you, you want to be recognized? Okay.
I just have one thing to say, I'm new to the city council, but just about two months ago, we turned two businesses that have already been in town for many, many years. We turned their liquor licenses down, and now we're going to consider additional liquor licenses, so that bothers me a little bit that, you know, there's businesses that are here in town, and we're going to listen to businesses coming into town, we may give them a liquor license, and we're not going to give our current businesses a license. Thank you.
Okay. Let's hear from, well, yeah, we got the presentation from Pine Grove. I guess we're just here, I guess we should do a fair shot for Daddies, right? Either, I don't care. What, you could go first. Go ahead, you got to go to the mic. First, we need your name. Do you need address, too? Name and your company.
Okay, I'm Richard Buckley, Pine Woods Restaurant Group. This is Gary Weeks, also Pine Woods Restaurant Group. Met you two weeks ago, talked a little bit about our business. The reason I wanted to make a statement, we were advised that one of the Aldermen had called on a number, and the number rang, that it wasn't available, so they wondered if we'd been in business. I did a little presentation, but I wanted to just, the reason I wanted to make a statement is to clear a couple of things up. One of our previous groups, Richards, I brought my shirt. On our menu, because it doesn't say Richards, we changed it to Molly's, the graphic artist, there's a mock-up of a phone number that's 555-555-5555. That does not ring, that's a mock-up. And it goes to one, any street avenue, so that's a mock-up from the graphic artist. So I just wanted to make that clear. Our business phone rings to me, we get calls every day, so that, it just raised a question, and I thought that we should address that and let you know that, that that is from a graphic mock-up only on our, on a menu that has been in use for us. Go ahead, Gary.
No, Richard had mentioned that, and so we wanted to kind of clarify, someone had asked us what our background was, and did we really have delis before, and what happened to the delis, and we're just going to take a quick minute just to give you the history again of who we are and what we do. So we just did another PowerPoint, which is going to be really quick, this is going to be very, very fast. Richard and I started delis in Oregon in 1994, and Richard will show them, and what we ended up doing was we sold the delis to a company by the name of Elmer's. They ultimately were on the NASDAQ, and about six years ago, a group of the shareholders bought the company and made it private. I currently am on that board of directors, and Richard, and a major shareholder, and Richard also is a major shareholder. But we're in the restaurant business, and that's the thing that we wanted to convey as we did at the last meeting, and Richard will just...
So I pulled this off of Urban Spoon, just took a quick shot. This is a couple of units in of what we started. I guess our point, we just wanted to give you our background, show that they're still in existence, actually, so Richard's named after me. We started these in 94, here's a couple of them in the area. We also started a group of Coopers, those are ours as well, they're still in existence as well, these are in Salem area. Those restaurants, we sold them, we were solicited by a company to buy our chain, and we sold them, and that was to Elmer's. Elmer's also still in existence, which we are the shareholders and on the board. Elmer's, this is one of their, I thought this was appropriate for the meeting, but funny, this is one of the ads, so this is a current ad that's on the website. Elmer's is a very, to, if you know Culvers here, you would know Elmer's there. So it's very similar, very well-known brand, heavily marketed, and a solid product. This is just some of the locations of Elmer's, and they're, again, the point just being that they bought our chain, so we established a couple of chains in Oregon of the similar concept. Go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, and that, we just want to let you know that they bought our chain, they're still in existence, that's one of the, Elmer's sign, it's a full restaurant. They are, they are not, we are not representing Elmer's here in Illinois. We have a number of our investors, as we've mentioned before, in Chicago. One of them was going to be here, had another dinner engagement, we want several of them to come, and we do have other investors. So we just wanted to let you know who we are. We do not represent Elmer's here again, and I wanted to be very specific about that, but they, some people had asked us, you know, what had happened with our Elmer, with our delis and that, and they have been bought by... our delis and that, and they have been bought by Elmer's. So we just wanted to just clarify that if anyone had any questions.
We'd love to answer questions if.
The state of Oregon?
Yes, sir.
They allowed video gambling?
They do indeed. In fact, the Illinois gaming laws, we understand it was patterned after what has been a successful program in Oregon. And we adopted gaming very early on, in early 1994, into our food service units. And we have, we had a great marriage. We have a great food business and then we use the gaming to augment the revenue, if you will. It helps pay rents, fees, maintenance and that sort of thing. But all, the units that I described to you that are still in existence, we started those, including food and beverage and gaming. The way, the way we run our business, food and beverage is a huge part of the business. In fact, greater than, than the, than the video gaming. But we certainly enjoy some of the revenues from the gaming to help pay the entire business. We generate sales tax, we have shared gaming revenues, we hire a ton of employees and we're a real business from the start. We are about business. We don't take it lightly. We invest in the communities. You want to mention about.
Yeah, well, yeah, and we are, we are a restaurant and it's quite obvious when we do get a liquor license, which we mentioned at the last time, it's very secondary to our business. It's a requirement if you do video gaming. But obviously, we cannot sit here and tell you where you're going to be a restaurant, which we are, in a very important spot in this community. And next year, come back if we do not perform to the satisfaction of the people that are before us and present something much different in a year. We have to come back in front of you folks to get another liquor license. So we're not going to tell you one thing today and then hope on hope that we're presenting something different. So we are a restaurant and that's what we be. Of course, we've talked with Kevin. The location, as we mentioned at the last meeting, is very close to the rail station and we feel that we can really offer a service to this community. We think that area has been vacant for some time. I think when we would take it over, it would really make that area and that part of town. I think it would be very positive for the community. And so. Oh, yeah, and we are going to be in a couple other communities and actually in the other communities, which we could tell you, we have two buildings in escrow, that we're not just renting spaces. One of them's a 5,500 square foot building in Loves Park. Another one is a building in Rockford. So we're just not coming and saying, oh gosh, we're going to rent a thing, we hope this works, because we are making an investment in the community. We didn't find a building that was suitable for our needs here to purchase, but if that opportunity came up, we certainly would do it. And like I say, we certainly, we're going to close on one here in a couple of days.
We're going to work on Kevin.
Yeah. But anyway, that's who we are. The one other thing I wanted to mention, Richard's very modest, he is, his restaurant background speaks for itself. He also is a restaurant consultant, was one of the most successful businesses in the El Camino Real, right close to Stanford University, is a restaurant called The Office. And it's, it is a bar. Richard doesn't own it. He did his consulting basis, picked the location. It is extremely successful. It's been in business for three years, but it has flat iron steaks and burgers and things like this. There is also a very high-end restaurant near Lake Tahoe that Richard also does consulting on and just moved it for the people and that restaurant now has tripled their business. He's also developed and done juice bars for people and things like that. So his business is very, very, very comprehensive. And I hate to brag on him, but he certainly knows what he's doing in the restaurant business. So that, any, any questions, you know, we're, we're here to answer them tonight.
Alderman Lazar.
You know, I guess it's not that, I believe that you could probably run this very successful. It's not really your background that is making me apprehensive about allowing this, other liquor license. My question is, would you open up a place here without liquor license if we would say no to you?
No.
Okay, so it hinges on that.
Well, at this point, I can tell you, we've run, I have personally run restaurants with and without, over a period of 35 years, with and without a gaming component. At this point in my career, knowing what I know now, it's a valuable component and a license is required to run that component. A liquor license. So I would also not, if you asked me, would you start a fine dining restaurant with a bar and restaurant, I personally would not do that as well because of the sheer volume of work required, even though I can make that successful.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. So I could just go, I don't have to ask?
That's how I run mine.
All right, thank you.
Until I say stop.
I'd like to.
So if you got a liquor license and we were apprehensive about you having gambling, would you not put gambling in?
No, I think I'd go back to the same, my same, for us, our concept, which we developed over a 20-year period, is to include gaming and food and beverage.
Okay, so I, I think that's, that was kind of clear before, but it seemed like you, a little bit fuzzy on, you know, what was important to you. And I think what's important to you is the whole package. You like the gambling, you like the liquor license and you like the deli.
Liquor license the least, to be quite honest. And, and as Richard has stated before, the video gaming just supplements what you do with this. I mean, you know, we open these restaurants and it's a three, four-year build-out before you get any profit. The gaming usually will allow you to break even in about 12 months to 18 months.
Okay. See, we're the city. We're really new to this. We still have, I believe it's eight businesses that have applied for the poker and video poker. I guess my apprehensive is, is that, you know, here's a company, a business that's been in Wooddale for all these years. They came to us, we said, okay, well, we'll allow this because we wanted to help them. If I start bringing in other businesses, they're going to look at me like, thanks, Frank. You know, you didn't even give us a chance to see if this would work and we're already bringing in outside businesses. That's, that's, that's a big thing, guys.
It very, it definitely is. There's one thing that I want to mention and I think this is, this is very common with most of the villages and they're very conscious of what's going on, you know, in this, in this type of business. And we had one village ask us, I think they were going to get like 10 establishments that were going to have video gaming and there would be five machines in each establishment. So five times 10 meant that they were going to have 50 machines, you know, in their community. They were very concerned about it. And of course, our experience from Oregon is that the people will, will gamble, you know, whether they go to Indian casinos or whatever. And that our business and the deli business and even including bars is still such a minor part. To give you an example, like in Elgin, there's the Riverboat Casino. They have over 1,100 machines just in that one area and that gives you the scope of what gambling is. Not that we're encouraging it or, you know, anything, just, you know, what it is. And of course, as you know, there's a lot of Indian casinos and things in Michigan and that, that advertise on the stations here in the greater Chicago area because they know that people are going to go and gaming. I would say to you that if a city of this size had 20 establishments like this, it would not, none of them would hurt. They would, they would, I'm not, they would, they would support each other. Very similar to, like when McDonald's builds, you build a Burger King across the street and then you get a Jack in the Box or something like that and, you know, when you stop somewhere, there is a kind, and I'm not saying that you want to, you know, you don't want to overdo it or oversaturate it, but the communities, because people enjoy, you know, gaming. And like, like I said, our type of gaming is very much not for happy hour or anything like that, it's just for casual, along with our food. Because most of the people that will come to our establishment will not participate in the gaming and a lot of them will not participate in the liquor. So, you know, that's just who we are. We, you know, that's, that's our concept.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
Okay, before we go any further on this. You're getting all the questions. Uh, Daddies, come on up.
We have one question before we.
Oh, sure.
With the, before you guys leave, one, one last.
They're not leaving.
With the other restaurants, whether those were Richards, Coopers, Elmer's, sound like you developed a lot of restaurants. There's investors involved.
Yes, sir.
You sold them off. So obviously, this is a set up and sell type of business model. Do you intend to do the same thing here? It's just a long-term investment? Do you guys have any money of your own in? Because you're saying investors. So I, I just want to know where you guys stand in the whole equation.
So we, we do have money of our own in and we, we do the heavy lifting, to be quite honest. We, we find them, source them, build them out, establish them, run them. We're anticipating about a 10-year run and that's sort of, in our view, that's the life cycle of a concept. If, within that 10 years, would we blend with somebody else fold in? That's a possibility. But really, in my view, a restaurant concept has about a 10-year run. Not McDonald's, not Burger King, but small private chains that we establish. So ultimately, we're not in it to start them today and sell them tomorrow. In fact, most of our leases prevent that and that seems to be typical and we're, we're fine with that. But at some point, we would potentially fold in and be greater, buy others, we, we don't know. But we're not in and out.
No, and I, I think the case in point is like we sold to Elmer's, we could have sold out for cash and walked. We sold out for cash and stock. And I currently am the largest stockholder in the company now, so we certainly didn't walk away from it. Richard's one of the largest. And I got to tell you, I was a little younger then and so in my particular case, I don't know how much longer, but we're not here to just turn something real quick. And I know the, you know, the investors I'm speaking of and everything, you know, would continue owning it. So, you know, no, we're not coming in to just do something for a year or two and then walk away.
Our minimum, our minimum leases, what we do, we do a five and a five. So that, we, we sort of look out 10 years. We do a five with an option, it takes us in five, we commit for five years. And we would commit to Kevin for five years. And that, we take that seriously. We put a personal guarantee. I put my name on it and Gary puts his. So this isn't talk, gee, it didn't work out. No, we, we back it up with our wallet and our energy. So we're, we're a long-term player.
Okay. Move over a little.
Yes.
So the young lady could have some at the table.
Thank you, by the way.
Could you tell us who you are and, who you are and?
Good evening, thank you for listening to me this evening. My name is Laura Tonnison and I'm here representing Daddies. And similar to Mr. Buckley's business, we began in Oregon, but we actually began in 1992. We've been operating our businesses for 20 years. There are 175 Daddies locations in the western states as well as now some Illinois locations and communities similar to Wooddale. Although Wooddale's very unique and we really want to move into Wooddale. We, we also have a longevity plan of those locations. We, we've only closed one and that wasn't by choice, the area was rezoned in Oregon. In 20 years, we've not ever had a liquor license suspended, revoked or penalized. They take their alcohol sales seriously, but again, it's an ancillary part of their business. They're a country kitchen concept. It was designed as an alternative to the traditional sports bar and it's not a, even a five or a 10-year plan, we're on a 20-plus plan. Once Daddies lays its roots, it really integrates into the community as a whole and there are no televisions in the facilities. It's literally designed like you're walking into somebody's grandmother's kitchen. No TVs, there's a, there's a full kitchen, more commercial, there's obviously a commercial kitchen and a full menu. But it's a place where older women generally, everybody's welcome, but it tends to draw women over the age of 45. 72% of their customers are women, 82% of those women are over the age of 45. It's, they're, they place these locations in well-lit shopping centers. They, women sometimes set up their book clubs in Daddies locations and they, again, the video gaming license requires a liquor license, which is a portion of it that, you know, it's obviously ancillary again to their restaurant and other merchandise sales.
I hope men aren't forbidden to your restaurant.
Pardon?
Men are not forbidden to your restaurant, are they?
No, no, it's, it's welcome to everybody, it just, it tends to attract. It, it's designed to be a cozy, well-lit, welcoming area.
Okay. What, did, did video gambling start in Oregon or what's, what's going on here? It seems everyone's coming from Oregon.
Probably because it did, it has been there for, it's, it's a very early adopter. There's other places, of course, that, you know, Montana, there's a number of spots, of course.
All right, let's open up. We're, we're going to call you Alderman Tony because your last name's difficult.
Thank you, this is addressed to Molly's Deli.
Tony, did you want to add something?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry, there was just one other thing, I apologize. As to Mr. Councilman Lazar's question earlier to Richards about other businesses, currently, this is an underserved demographic. This isn't something that's going to pull business from any of the established businesses here or pretty much in any other community because Daddies is really a unique concept. It's catering to a typically, there's a void in the community right now that it's not being fulfilled by other businesses and obviously we would like to fill that.
Okay.
I would agree with the underserving, self-serving as that sounds and it probably is, but I think there's opportunity in the niche that, and we're not here, of course, to represent Daddies, but the niche that they represent is different than what we represent. But there's a need and there's a desire by the community, we know that. That's why we're here, that's why we have an investment in that.
Okay. Now, we're going to go to Alderman Tony.
How do you handle the under 21 crowd when they walk into your business?
We handle it two ways. What, because we're food oriented, generally, we isolate an area for gaming and isolate that for 21 and over and then monitor it. And we're required by the gaming, the IGB, to monitor that in a certain way, which we do. In some cases, in small locations, we have 21 and over only. But generally, depending on where the location is and the size and we've, you know, we, we want the blessing of the community before we invest a lot of money and sunk costs into our layout. But we will isolate, anyway, to answer your questions specifically, we'll isolate that area and control that.
So this is not the way it's going to look, it's going to be isolated, it's going to be?
Some of them, the way we isolate is actually with a, with a half wall. We don't have a visual separation. There again, there's differences. So in Oregon, for instance, you must maintain a visual separation between gaming machines and the general public under 21. That's not the case here with the IGB. You can put them on the street, they can, you can look through the window. Now, to us, I don't think it makes sense, but there's not a restriction. So what we'll do is build them with half walls, generally.
See, the, the name is kind of deceiving, Molly's Deli. So if a family wants to have a sandwich and they bring their kids in there, they're just going to have a sandwich at Molly's Deli. And then you walk in and you see these machines, I've seen these machines in these bars, I mean, they got the bells and the whistles. I mean, when somebody wins, they're going like crazy. So, you know, I can expect a family, you know, if they, for instance, they go to a bar, they know what to expect in a bar. But if a family walks in here and with their kids, it's going to have a different, we're going to get complaints. Maybe, maybe it should be named Molly's Lounge and Bar?
We could, we, you know, we've named, these were Richard's Deli and Pubs. We did not prevent minors from coming in. There again, we isolate them and screen them, but I can tell you, we will get a big food business, we do a lot to go, we build a big lunch trade. I think our job, if, to do it properly, is to maintain that those items can work together. And we separate them, but they, so we can, if we create an environment that's only gaming, we will drive away our food business. And if we create an, an area that's strictly food and we can't get into gaming at all, then that kills that. So it's our job to, to make that work. I think that we can, we, we believe we can work them complementary rather than opposed. And I don't, I would believe you would not have any sort of complaints that, gee, we thought this was a deli, we can't get a sandwich here. They'll be lining up to get sandwiches. We know that. So, there again, I, I'll leave it at that.
Is anyone curious on how much is, how much we made so far with this video gambling? I guess not.
About $3,000.
Let's go to Almond and Eugene Wesley. Excuse me. Quite, the, I take it these questions are open for both of them, either one?
This one's strictly to Dottie and Dottie already answered the question. My question to you, the same question that was raised here by one of the other aldermen. Would you consider opening up in Wooddale without a liquor license?
Again, that's, that's not Dottie's business model and, and they probably would not.
Well, let me ask you those other questions. Is Dottie, is all their business that they own have gambling in their buildings?
Yes, Alderman.
Every single one?
To my knowledge, yes.
That is my downfall with the liquor license. There's gotta be a way. And I was against this gambling and I'll tell you, all of a sudden now we got people lining up here. And where, where was your location going to be at in Wooddale?
Uh, 120 Irving Park Road.
The, the old what?
Next to U.S. Cellar.
U.S. Cellar? Okay, and my other concern about that, how is parking gonna be issued there with Dottie? If we grant this liquor license, actually both locations, how is that gonna meet the requirement in the building code that you have to have so many parking spots? Right now, we have Marinos in there. We also have a Subway in there. And that place is pretty packed during lunchtime. So, my question is, I don't think either of these businesses is gonna meet the requirement for parking wherever they go. Because I will tell you, how many, let, let's look at the other place. How many parking spots are there there now?
Why don't, why don't I? Thirty-five and none are being used.
Okay. Well, let's go at 35 and then if we get, we fill that down the line, we won't meet the requirement of parking. I'm just saying is that we also have to consider, not just the liquor license here, as aldermen and ladies, we have to think of the parking situation to add these businesses in that area with liquor license and gambling in the parking. They still have to obey by the city code of parking wherever they go. And I think the whole picture of this thing is that we are stepping away from that perspective of a parking issue here. We are talking about liquor license, but no one is thinking about the parking situation we may run into here. And then we'll have people complain, well, there's no more parking here and all that. So, let's look at that picture too before we give a final decision up there.
If you don't mind, I'd like to address the parking issue, at least regarding Wooddale Station, which we are the owner of.
You gotta give a name.
Kevin Thornton with Wooddale Station and Wright Management. That's okay, don't have to get up.
You could, you could lift that up if you want.
Okay. And, it's okay. We have 35 parking spots in the front of the building. We have no retail tenants in seven years. So we have plenty of parking. We are actually going to add another 18 parking spots on the east property line. It financially makes no sense for us to do it right now because I've got empty parking that's been sitting there for seven years. So, from a parking standpoint, Wooddale Station, we have no problem. There are like, Molly's Deli's only going to be taking 1,500, no, I'm sorry, square foot? 1,300 square feet. 1,350 square feet. We couldn't park 35 people there, if, 35 cars there if we wanted to. So, right now, I've got plenty of, we've got plenty of parking. We are actually adding additional parking if this goes through. It financially makes no sense to add parking for a parking lot sits there empty 99% of the time right now. Thank you.
Okay. I gotta go to Almond Winger.
Thank you. So, that exact thing is what I was gonna ask Mr. Thornton when I was recognized of, other than a failed pirate store, what has been there for how long has it sat empty? This building has empty storefronts from left to right. Seven years is my answer. That is a long time to have a property owner sit there with nothing filled. I do believe that having this establishment there, a small establishment, will start to allow things to, to develop. We have to do something there to get it moving. And these gentlemen are saying they're, they're there for at least five years. It's not gonna be a six months. Let's try it and see what happens. So, that's one, one of the main reasons why I want to give this a try. Thank you.
Almond Woods.
Yeah, I just wanted to get us back on track. We're almost having a mini zoning board hearing here. My first question is, I want to know if Representative Laura Tennyson finished her presentation for Dottie so that she got fair airtime with the rest of the gentlemen?
Well, obviously, our biggest concern is that the council understand our business model and while it was a little bit jumbled because, you know, fielding questions and all that, it's, it's a pretty straightforward model. We're a small shop, again, we're 1,600, 15, a little under 1,600 square feet of space. We're not as concerned with the parking issue because, strictly because it is being placed in a strip mall that was designed to, for commerce. They were, they, they designed these places for cars and for people to come and, and go. And, and we believe that that's a suitable location for our, our business. And to, to the effect that, you know, if, if Wooddale is concerned about the liquor sales or the gambling, we're only anticipating about 25% of the total sales to come from alcohol and gaming combined.
25% of your sales?
That's what our estimate is at this point. We're, we're a restaurant first and foremost.
Okay. Almond Smarsky.
Before all you aldermen and all women go thinking about giving it a chance, like Alderman Jacobs did say, we do have other, other establishments in this community that have been asking for liquor licenses. So, before you go handing them out to people we don't have, that are not in this town and do not have established base here, you need to start thinking, you need to think about that also.
Okay. Again, Almond, what's your name? Uh, Jacobs, Almond Jacobs.
I have a question for both of yous. First of all, Molly's, all these other, the Richards, the Coopers, the Elmer's, did all these have a liquor license and gambling in them as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that is strictly because it's, if you have gaming, it's a requirement that you have liquor. You can't have gaming without beer and wine, in our case, without beer and wine. So we don't seek that. That's a requirement part of the package.
Okay, second question. How many, the design of your restaurant, how many people can you seat at one time?
We could seat generally about 35 is our number right in there. We've gone, it depends on the location. With this particular location, we'll be about, excuse me, for this location, we'll be about 33, I believe. We haven't done the final drawings because we wanna, there again, we wanna be blessed and be welcomed into the community. Then we'll have our architect finish up and we'll get drawings and get them to Kevin and have him approve them.
Now, is that the total seating capacity or is just, is that just for the restaurant or is that for the gaming or...
That's, so we're about between 35 and 40 total with gaming that works. We have about 10 tables. We do three tops in the front. So if you come into our location, generally, there'll be, there could be, it depends on the square footage, of course, but we'll have a dining area in the front and we try to put our gaming to the, to the rear on the side. Five seats for gaming, 30 roughly seats in dining. Can't go 40. If we have one location, if it's 2,000 feet, then it will do 45, say.
And I have a question for Dottie's too. What, as far as your restaurant, what's the seating capacity there?
Also similar to, to Mr. Buckley's restaurants, we're looking at between 20, around 25 comfortably. We, we can expand that a little bit, but again, it's a small space. All-in, probably 33 to 40 people total in the restaurant at, at one time.
And all your restaurants have gaming and liquor licenses as well?
Yes, sir, to my knowledge, yes.
I, I guess the final question, the two companies, are you guys related at all? Either companies, do they have any relation to one another?
Okay, thank you.
We're familiar with Dottie.
And we're familiar with...
They were one of the early adopters, excuse me. Speaking for Dottie, they were one of the early adopters of gaming in a safe, clean, really urban environment. And we liked it, quite frankly. We liked that model. We, we're different. We approach it differently and we, you know, we have a pretty extensive menu, but nevertheless, we're familiar with them. We know they're, they're in lots of different communities. But we're not related in any way, shape, or form and have never met their ownership or management or...
Okay.
Had the opportunity to meet these young ladies.
We've never met her before. Thank you.
Yeah.
Does, Dottie's know that, are you just looking for beer and wine?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, nothing else?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I guess we need a motion to see if the council wants to open two more liquor licenses on beer and wine only. What, I don't know what class that is. Is there a class or... Okay, beer and wine only. I'll make that into a motion. To make two liquor licenses available. I, there's a motion.
Need a second.
Need a second.
Second.
Okay. I need a roll call. You wanna... I guess we're doing, yeah, let's room together. There's two. Roca.
I have one question.
Oh, you wanna put a question? Okay. Go ahead.
Is there anything that we need to have the city attorney look into? Issues going back to Alderman Lazaro's point that we turned down two existing businesses in town. I don't want to start a war or get us into a lawsuit that we're turning somebody down and then giving some other people.
Okay, Jeff can answer.
I don't believe so. We're, we're not issuing the license tonight. All we're doing is making a recommendation to open up two liquor licenses. Not necessarily to these two establishments, actually. We're opening up two beer and wine liquor licenses so the attorney could, you know, look at that before we finalize. But I don't think there's an issue in speaking with him before.
And the other two businesses in town will have equal access to those two newly opened up licenses?
I believe so. I'm not 100% sure because I'm not an attorney. But the mayor would grant the, the mayor would grant the liquor license. The council has to open a liquor license.
So would that be, I'll, I'll address the mayor then. Would that be open to the other two businesses equally?
Honestly, I think, because I had a little conversation with Pat, it's not that we open one up and then first want to get their paperwork. We'd be opening it up for a specific reason. You know, that's, it, it wouldn't be we open one up, beer and wine, and somebody can run in, you know, 801 and hand it in. It would be specific.
That goes back to my point. Do, do we need to look at this a little more, research it a little more? I mean, it sounds like there's some question as to what we're doing here. Mr. Murmice?
Well, typically, yes. Mayor's right. There's no, there's never a vacant license. We never have a vacant license. So when the committee makes a recommendation to issue a license, it's typically for a business that's come in and presented. So, there's never a vacant license. So if we recommend them, likely, yeah, it would be for one of these businesses tonight.
And just so we're clear, excluding the businesses in town that are already applied and were turned down, so they can't apply?
I don't believe so.
Thank you.
Almond Winger.
And just a point of clarification. We can ask the attorney to review our intent and then when we vote on it at the next city council meeting, have any questions answered too before we vote.
I'll re, redo my motion for, for the attorney to look at it too. A secondary?
I agree.
Okay.
Before we vote, could I?
You wanna?
I, I would be in favor for it if we gave four liquor licenses. Give the two that wanted a liquor license as well as granting two additional.
Mr. Mayor, were those just beer and wine too? I, I wasn't here for that.
One was, they wanted margar, basically, they wanted margaritas and beer. Naturally, if we were giving out beer and wine, you know, you could ask them, I'm sure they would agree. The other one was a gas station and it was packaged liquor only.
Could, could we amend the motion?
Number one, those two no longer have a request because we sent them to denial. So there's, if you amend the motion, you open it up to anybody who wants to come in.
Okay. So, we got a motion. We got a second.
One quick question.
Another question?
Well, I want clarification of what the motion was. You made some changes to the motion. I'm not quite sure what those changes were. So if you could restate them, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
So, for two liquor licenses, beer and wine only, for the approval, with the approval of the attorney, right?
Did, did you, so we cannot amend the other two and put them in the, in the motion? Is that right? But, but they can come back on their own, is that correct? After these two and then we would hear what they have to say?
Yes. Are you, Mr. Mayor?
Basically, once they hear that, after they were just rejected, I'm sure they're gonna be running over here to let me have it.
That's the point I've been trying to make.
Okay. That would question. Let's do a roll call.
Go over the motion one more time?
Two liquor licenses, beer and wine only. With the approval, the attorney has to look over, look it over. That's the motion. What? Okay. Got it? Okay.
Does the second or agree?
Yes, she did. Right?
I, I agree, but the concern is, is that we're, it's not gonna go through just based on...
Well, that's what we gotta vote on. That's why we vote.
Yeah, agreed. Okay.
If you feel that way, then... Okay, we could do a roll call.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes?
I, I only say that because this isn't an easy vote. No.
Alderman Jacob?
No.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalino?
No.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
No.
Alderman Smarsky?
No.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
No.
Motion fails. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for hearing us.
Okay. I just want to bring up some things, the mayor, not to the mayor, but to the city manager, before I, before my committee's out. manager, before I, before my committee's out. Mr. City Manager, I've never seen so many weeds in the city in my life. We need to address those and get it done, one way or another.
Okay.
I've never seen it so bad.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anything that you, that Mr. Vesta told you that he wanted to add into this?
Obviously, I was not cut appropriately, but, um, no, that was all Mr. Chief Vesta had for the meeting.
Okay. I don't know if I left anything out or didn't recognize you or for, if I needed to, if I missed something, I apologize. So this is new to me.
Never mind.
You, you just speak and I don't even recognize you anyway, so. Okay, items B to consider, to consider for a future meeting. Then, is there anything, let's say no. Okay. Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Called to order the Finance and Administration Committee. The minute taker, please take note that same, same Alderman are here. I need approval minutes of the meeting for April 25th, 2013.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post.
Stay.
Thanks, Peter. Yeah. I need a, I got a report recommendation. The council chambers audio system update. You inform a motion?
Does that have to be a motion?
No, that motion. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You may recall, about two years ago, the council approved the city staff to-
I interrupted for one minute. Should, I don't mean to take this off your plate, but I believe this should also fall into IT and I would expect Nick to be out here to answer some of these questions that may arise. I mean, I just, go ahead.
This is not your committee.
Mr. Murmice?
Brad was just gonna give a brief overview and Nick's fully prepped and, and ready to go, and we want him to come out.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. Yeah, a little over two years ago, the council directed staff to upgrade the video components of the AV room, the cameras, things of that nature. At that time, the audio system was still working and in compliance, so we didn't do the audio portion of that. As per the memo, it's currently now not really in compliance anymore and components are starting to fail, and with the newer video equipment that we have in there now, it's starting to roll a bit faster. So that's why the audio components are on there now to replace them now. The video components, as well as the audio components, are to be paid for, reimbursed through the PEG fees that are generated on the AT&amp;T and soon to be Comcast bills. You may recall, we redid the franchise agreement with Comcast a few months ago in the fall to allow for the assessment of those PEG fees. Comcast is ready to go. We just need to get this approved, so we have a final number to give to them so that we can get that on the books with them. So really, it's the same thing that we did with the video side of it, with the reimbursement through those fees, it's just the audio side of the house now. And as Mr. Manager referenced, if there are any technical questions, Mr. Case is more than ready to come on and answer them, but just wanted to give a high-level overview first.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
All right. I have a couple of questions. This is a price tag, not to exceed $34,000. And my question earlier this week is, have we approached an attorney on this? The simple reason is, it's over $10,000. In our rural states, anything over $10,000 must go up for three quotes. So my question is, unless, if I am mistaken, it doesn't have to be, go off a quote unless it meets the standards that no other company could fit into our equipment. I just wanna verify that tonight, that no one else's equipment could fit to our equipment, that this company that you are recommending, legally, we could award a contract to them even though it's over $10,000. I just wanna make sure that we don't have to go off a bid and, and do it that way. So could someone verify that statement, that question I just asked, and then I have a follow-up on that.
Mr. Wilson, is there a way to break that up, break that total up and not have to have the whole amount, so you don't have to go out to bid?
Yeah. Mr. Case did speak with Attorney Bond earlier in the week, and similar to the process we went through for the video side of the house, this is their equipment, while other companies do make audio equipment or whatever, I kinda explained it earlier, you know, you have a, a certain, you have the same brand DVD player, VCR, TV, stereo, you're not gonna buy another brand's receiver to try and integrate it all. And so unless Mr. Case corrects me from our conversation earlier, Mr. Bond did say that due to the, the nature of this equipment and this project, we were able to go with this company under those rules.
Do you want Mr. Case to come out?
Only if I'm wrong.
Mr. Wilson is correct, and speaking with Attorney Bond, the only difference would be, it's not necessarily the equipment, but the design of the system. Each individual company designs their own system, the way it works. Most companies can make it work with ours. This company designed all of our video aspect and all the components that are the, the recording aspect. All of this has to tie in together. So it would be wise to stick with the same company to integrate audio as well, 'cause it's their design of our system. We, you know, if we had a third-party company come in, now we have two support contracts, we have something that isn't necessarily guaranteed to work, compatibility, there, there's gonna be other equipment involved, there's gonna be, and, and really, it's, it's not the equipment, it's the design.
Mm-hmm.
That's the most important.
Mr. Wilson, Eugene Wesley?
Let's go back. So after we invest this money into it now, that we're going to redo the mics, is there any other thing that we have to do? 'Cause I sat here last time and when, when we fought for, for that, to get the system, I said, why didn't we just do it all at once? Now we back here again, piecemealing it back together again. My question to you right now, is there anything else down the line that is going to have to be done to this chambers for the people to hear it the right way and to bring it up to code? 'Cause I don't wanna come back here again, we give $34,000 and next year you're coming back and saying, oh, now we gotta do this. Make, I said last time, do it all at once, and you guys told me that.
I do recall, the only reason we took the audio portion out of it is the audio was still intact, we were still in compliance, and we, you know, the goal was to kinda squeeze as much time out of us as we could to kind of elongate the fact that in the next ten or twenty years, we'll have to do it again. And with the way things progress, it's gonna be less than that. To answer your question, this will be the last step, the last phase, everything will be replaced at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Roy Wesley?
So, I've been talking about this for a while. So when are the people gonna be able to hear us?
Well, if, once this is passed, we're gonna get moving on it immediately, so.
So are we gonna be done with this?
I don't have a timeline on from start to finish, but I would assume less than a month after pass. As long, granted, if all equipment is in stock and it's able to be ordered, the design is there.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Woods?
When we get this new system, will it have more than one portable mic so we don't have to share amongst, like, eight presenters?
It will. There are two in the design, and they're fairly costly, fact that we can always add more at any time. The system will be designed to be able to hold multiple wireless mics.
And includes the podium?
That includes the podium as well, and all of your mics.
Ms. Winger?
Thank you. Regarding doing other upgrades or trying to get things to work better, with a, a home laptop, just the other day, I tried to pull up a committee meeting, and it just sat there and it churned and it churned. Maybe my laptop is out of date, it's probably four years old. Then I tried it on my iPad, it worked a little better, but it wasn't quite there yet. How, how are we looking at the actual usage of being able to view these at home? I remember when we first started viewing, allowing people to download and view at home on their computer, it worked really well, but now it seems like it's harder to view.
Sure. There's a lot of factors involved in that, from each person's personal computer through to how they're accessing it, the size of the files. We try to keep them smaller, a little bit quicker, which also degrades our video quality, so you're not seeing things as well or hearing them. That is gonna come with the website. That, the, the issue is not any of the recording equipment, but it's more on the end of the website, where it's being accessed from.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Woods?
Um, with the, uh, no, I forgot what the question was.
Here's.
With the, no, pass me, it'll come back to me.
Mayor?
Nick, you just mentioned the website. The website's so we, residents can view, view it on the web quicker, is that what you're mentioning, or upgrading our website? 'Cause we spoke earlier, and I was gonna put it on items for future meetings, because you said, well, it could be months. I would prefer a timeline.
Sure. Um, are we talking about the website, or are we talking about the video?
The website, because you, you mentioned the website has to be upgraded so you can view at home on your computer.
That'll be a function of it that will help with speed and other things. That's, that will be a part of it. That's what's gonna help with the videos, we'll have an online storage and some other things. But are you referring to then a timeline on the website completion or start date, or what are, what are you looking for?
Well, actually, right, wanna get some type of consensus here, when, when's this gonna take place?
The start, well, I'd have to bring it to council first, but it has been started. We are, we're still looking at a few different companies going out to bid for it. It's gonna be a very expensive project, as you guys know. So we, we're looking at a few different companies currently. We've got a couple quotes in, still waiting for more. There are a lot of companies out there that do a lot of different things. There's a lot of function from certain site providers and not from others, and there's, you know, they have apples over here and oranges over here, and we're looking for the best combination of what we can get for, with one provider, for all the functions we want on our site. So that's, that's where we're at with that. It, I was gonna bring it to council once I had a better understanding of what each option is, and, okay, we have package A, package B, package C from provider A, B, and C. And then I was gonna bring it to council once I have all of that in a nice memo and let you guys kinda have some decision there and decide what you wanna go. I would assume that, to answer a timeline question, within, let's say, two months.
So when I ask for items on future tier, but May, June, right, June 29th?
Time's up.
I got my memory back. Some of the communities upload to YouTube. I know that we talked about it. Is there a reason that we wouldn't do that? Wouldn't that save a server room or does it have some benefits that we should look at or not at all?
We can, we can absolutely upload to YouTube. We can create a YouTube account and do that. That's not a problem at all, and there's really no reason that I can think of right now that we couldn't or wouldn't necessarily want to.
And would that help with some of the issues that Alderman Winger was talking about?
Sure would.
Okay, so maybe we could do that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Case, I got a question for you, as far as the website upgrade. Are we selling time on, how, how does that work? Are we selling time on the website to pay for, or is there a way to do that?
Selling time.
Add time or ad space for the, the government channel or?
Oh.
I've had people asking, that's the quietest reason I'm at.
For example, are we, would we lease a section of the website for advertisements, et cetera?
Supplement the payment of this.
We do not, and I would most likely not recommend that, being a city website. I don't know if you, even, even though it'd be a sole position, it's almost like promoting a business. I don't know if that would be a, a good idea.
Just for city, just for city businesses, I was looking at, so.
Okay. I mean, it's something we can certainly look into and talk about.
Mr. Wesley?
Is there a motion on the floor yet?
No.
I, I'll make a motion, approve the update for $34,000 for the update of the equipment in this room, providing that this is the last one I'm coming to die a sweat. So that will be my motion.
A second.
Second.
Need a roll, roll call?
Roll call.
Need a roll call? Any, I'm sorry, any other questions?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Alderman Lozaro?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Number five, a report recommendation, yeah, SRF low-interest loan in fa, for Phase One B of the North Water, wastewater treatment plant project. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, much like what was passed at the council meeting last week, is a very procedural item, at the point that we're at with the treatment plant and the IEPA loan. Back in May of last year, the council passed a bond ordinance that was sent to IEPA for $18 million. At that time, back in May, that was kind of the best, best dart we had at what the number was gonna be. Subsequent to that, we finished the completion, you know, added the, the UV and got the bids back, as we all know, came in at $20 million three forty. Statutorily, within the IEPA loan documents, we can add a 3% contingency, we can add capitalized interest during construction of up to 3%, and we can also add in engineering costs, construction engineering costs. So the difference between option A and B is the engineering cost there. And these are all amounts that are, that are statutorily allowed that we can request through the IEPA for this loan process. One thing I wanna emphasize, and it was in the memo, is that whichever of these numbers, or the original number, we choose is the ceiling of what we can borrow. It does not automatically obligate us to borrow that, it doesn't otherwise, you know, cause us to borrow that. It's just an ordinance from the city saying this is what we're ultimately possibly requesting. You may remember, about eighteen months ago, we had to pass one for the $9.9 million bond issue we did. Again, that's the authority for what the maximum amount we could ask for. So I would just caution that, you know, that some of these numbers, they're, they're getting pretty big, but this is not a, what we're going to get, what we must take, it's the ceiling. It's just giving us headroom if we wanna go up to that number. The caveat is if we don't pass a new bond ordinance increasing it, then we're stuck at the 18 million, and if we're looking at 21 to 22 million in construction costs, then we're looking at four to five million out of pocket that we weren't specifically anticipating doing. So this is just to get the, the additional headroom for the remainder of the project, and as this is not obligating us to borrow that much money.
Eugene Wesley?
Here's my thought on this one. My thought is that we go ahead and, and go for $22,446 and $700. The reason why I'm saying that we go for that is, again, if we come to shortfall with the low-interest loan, I guarantee you, I don't care how many council members go down and meet with the EPA, that's it. You ain't gonna get any more money. We did run in some situation with the treatment plan on the first phase already, on some tank cleaning that was not respected in the, the, the cost on this. I don't know, tell you the truth, I'm not the expert, I'm not the engineer, but I don't know what we could run into this, for this next phase. I have no clue. I mean, we ran in some issues out there on, that we had go into the reserve money that we- I mean, we ran in some issues out there that we had go into the reserve money that we banked earlier in the project, that we banked some money in reserve, that we saved money, that we had go into that account and take some of that money out. We still have a wall that we're looking to finish up on that project. We discuss about putting the, knowing that we spending that kind of money, we thought about, some aldermen talked about putting the marine symbol and the army signal right into the wall. That is not part of this project. So my suggestions, all the money that we have saved, we have spent quite a bit of that money, that we saved on the first phase of this. So I suggest that we go after it all, because simple reason is, like he said, we don't have to take it. It's just a loan. We don't have to take it, after the bottom line, we can say, "We only want you to cut a check for $18 million or $19 million," but I think we should go for the large amount. And I believe you also said, "We would have, if we go to lower, we would have to come back here and change it again if we ask for more money?" An ordinance? I think I read it there.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, that's correct, yeah, it would be a third change to the bond ordinance, and once the project gets going, obviously becomes harder and harder
Right.
to change that number as you go along.
I mean, I would go for that.
Alderman-Woods?
Yeah, my question was of Alderman-Wesley, was that in the form of a motion?
Oh, that will be my motion, that's it.
Second.
Alderman-Jacob?
Just one question, it's almost like a no-brainer to go for the higher amount, but is there any negative impact of going for a higher amount?
The negative is, I would say the negative is, if we don't go to higher amount, and we have a price tag that comes over higher, we run in a situation out there, you could dip in reserves, I mean, you could dip, take forward, like he said, you could take $4,000 out of our reserve if you want, if we run into a problem. I mean, I'd rather play it safe, just like buying a house. Take out as much as you can, and no one says you have to spend it.
Well, I agree with you, I'm just trying to just make sure that there's no negative
Yeah.
to the city on doing that.
And to my knowledge, unless Mr. Hardy knows of a detriment to going for a higher amount, I'm not aware of any.
That's all the questions, roll call vote?
Alderman-Lazaro?
Option B, right? Yes.
Alderman-Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman-Winger?
Yes.
Alderman-Catalano? Alderman-Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman-Woods?
Yes.
Alderman-Szmarski?
Yes.
Alderman-Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Any items to be considered for the future meeting? They have a website upgrade from May and June. Anything else?
Yes, I, I just
Wait, Mr. Wesley?
I just want to make a mention here, that, this was brought to my attention, that we spent $130 Thursday, last Thursday, to get the city hall grass cut, which is crazy, when we had more than enough time to get it done, and we're paying overtime to get the grass cut. I cut those 200 acres over by Oak Meadows, and it gets cut, and I don't understand why the city couldn't get theirs done.
City Mayor Burris?
I'm sure, as we went over before, it was scheduled for, in the afternoon, there was a downpour in the afternoon, so we had to stay after to wait till the rain was done. And I know you're going to comment that scheduling should have been done better, so I guess scheduling should have been done better, but we wanted the city to look nice that day, so we had to rest some overtime.
All week.
Eugene Wesley?
I would like this on agenda, or unless someone could give me the answer now. Are all the computers that we purchased installed through the whole city? You don't have to give me the answer today, if you don't have the answer.
They are.
So every computer that we purchased are now installed?
Minus the spare ones, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Woods?
Has all the software been converted over since
It has.
we're on that case? Everybody's operating under the same
Correct.
operating system and?
Operating system, office version, antivirus version, all of it.
Excellent. Thanks.
Any other questions? Make a motion adjourned?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Terries?
That was staying.
That passes. Report and recommendation, H.R. Green, Elgin-O'Hare project presentation, bicycle pedestrian consideration. I'll turn that over to H.R. Green.
Good evening, for those of you that have not met me before introduction, I'm Scott Markwork with H.R. Green. As I get the presentation set up, we had our first presentation two weeks ago on this topic, and at that time, it was an introduction to, that's the wrong button. There we go. We had a introduction on the project, on what was going to be coming up, kind of let you know what you'd be seeing on subsequent meetings, some of the decisions that would be necessary as we go through the projects and the decisions that the tollway is looking for on this. So, what I'd like to do is, what I'd like to do as we go through these meetings is summarize recent events, keep you current on it, go through the presentation, get the direction and such that we're looking for in a particular evening, and at the end of the meeting, wrap it up and provide you an update of what's going to be coming up at future meetings. Keep telling you what's coming, so when we come back to you again, that you've heard it a time or two before, make sure that you're familiar with the topics, and give you the opportunity to ask any particular questions. The more advanced that we can address some of these concerns, the better off it tends, the process tends to run. So, I'll usually spend just a few minutes on recent events. A couple of things that have happened since we last met, we've been working with the tollway in DuPage County about some design changes along Wooddale Road that affect access to the Courtyard by Marriott. So I had met with Assistant CD Director Henigan and staff members from Courtyard, at the Courtyard, went over the plans, received information from them on what they needed for access, and have conveyed that back to the tollway designers. Has to do with their north driveway, which is their main entrance, on maintaining as much access as possible. Also, that day last Tuesday, the Village of Itasca hosted a open house, where they had distributed notices to all of their residents and all of their businesses. At that meeting, there were 179 people that officially signed in, the estimate was between 250 and 300 people that did attend this open house. John Forrest did come over and see that, gave an idea of the information that the tollway can make available to the communities, their residents and businesses. So it's something to, for information to consider in the future. There is a link on the Village of Itasca website, that does have the, also on the tollway website, that does have the handouts, the information that was available at that meeting. It's another resource to see the type of info, the type of materials, the type of project that's coming forward. And then last week, we met again with city staff and also your village engineer to go over utility conflicts, coordination, and coordination about the bicycle path, pedestrian type enhancements. So it's a quick summary of what's happened recently. This is a slide that you have seen before, a couple of weeks ago, it's a list of some of the ideas and topics that will come before you, and try to give you a look-ahead schedule on when you'll, we'll be bringing some of those topics to your attention. Tonight, we want to go over the pedestrian and bike system, coming up in the near future, lighting, signals, emergency vehicle preemption. These are all enhancements to systems above and beyond what the tollway would normally put in. They can be aesthetic enhancements and such, that we'd be looking for direction on. Shortly thereafter, we'd like to bring some information on utility upgrades, there's a lot of impact on water and sewer along this corridor, and bring some recommendations so we can start providing that information to the tollway. And then there's other topics on there that you see that will be coming up shortly thereafter, just specific meetings are not yet scheduled in regards to those topics. So, tonight, bicycle pedestrian system. The next slides that you're going to see, it will visually show existing pedestrian network, I'll explain what the tollway construction policy is, show what the tollway will build at no cost to the community, and then show you options of what can be added at this time, take advantage of the opportunity to consolidate some of these improvements within the overall tollway project, along with info on our recommendations. It's, we've worked with staff, both Public Works and Community Development with some of the ideas, but we want to see if there's any other ideas, input, and such.
Mr. Mayor, could you interrupt for a minute? Frank, could you interrupt for a minute?
All right, go ahead.
Here's the situation I see on this project already. When we first came to, when you first gave your presentation, we did ask that some aldermen be appointed to sit on this committee. My concern about this now is we having all these special meetings with our staff and everything else, and this is coming forward. And now you're asking me to make a decision, or possibly make a decision on, tonight, on what, the bicycle pedestrian bridge?
What we're asking for is some direction, oh.
Go ahead.
Okay, some direction, if you do want to proceed with enhancements or not. One thing to make clear is, a commitment at this time does not obligate you to that expense. Built within the intergovernmental agreement that will occur in the future, we've done the same thing in the Village of Itasca, is, gives the community the right to, once bids are received, keeping in mind, these projects aren't bid for about two years yet. If bids come in unreasonably high, or for some reason, the community cannot move forward with those enhancements, it does give the community the ability to withdraw from those. So we're asking for commitments, general direction, not asking anybody to sign a check right now, there's nothing that's a commitment to the current fiscal year budget. This is a year, two, three years in the future, to give some idea for planning for the future. Part of the reason some of the topics are coming up at the pace they are, we have 30% concept plans in hand for the entire project, and we do actually owe the tollway some comments back tomorrow. One of the topics has to do with bicycle and pedestrian enhancements, ideas, community's willingness to include some of these items.
But again, let's do a follow-up with my question that I have. We knew pedestrian bridge discussion was coming up, our staff knew. We had given response back, am I correct?
Yes.
Again, I looked at the mayor's appointments, again, we still don't have two aldermen on his position to give the aldermen consideration for the decision-making, even though we're doing it tonight, but we don't have any documents that were produced to us on what was discussed in the staff about the pedestrian bridge, because, again, we've seen it today, but we did not get copies of a meeting that they have on this project. It is a biggest, one of the bigger than a treatment plant project. That's what I'm trying to say here, we are not getting memos, so we're doing this by the fly now, because we don't know. Scott, we're not being asked to make any really hard decisions right now. Is that correct?
Correct. If, at the end of the evening, what I'd like to get is general direction, do you want to proceed with bike and pedestrian enhancements?
Okay.
And there would be a future cost to Wooddale?
Okay, why don't we go ahead and finish your presentation, and then we'll get some more questions afterwards then. Okay, thank you, Scott.
Okay. All right. Tollway construction policy. The policy that they will follow is, if there's an existing bike path or sidewalk that's affected by the project, they will replace them. Also, understanding that there's certain logistics to building paths, sidewalks, et cetera, across the tollway or under bridges. The tollway has committed to, on major structures, one of which would be the Wooddale Road Bridge over the Elgin-O'Hare. On the bridge, they will build a 10-foot wide path, they will make that accommodation for future pedestrian routes, at their expense. That is a several hundred thousand dollar figure that they're picking up. What they're also doing is, on certain bridges, they're building, one example, one would be Lively Boulevard, they will build the bridge, Elgin-O'Hare, over Lively, longer than would be necessary just for the roadway, to provide the additional space to put a path or sidewalk connection underneath it. So that's, again, a pretty good expense that the tollway is picking up, to make those accommodations for future systems. Keeping in mind, we're not just looking at paths and sidewalks that exist today, but 20, 30, 40 years in the future. So, that's what the tollway will do. So the next slides I want to show you is, first slide, I'm just going to point out a couple of locations, so everybody's familiar. Prospect Avenue, Salt Creek, Middle Boulevard, Wooddale Road, Lively Boulevard, Route 83. You're going to see the same slide with additional information, it's actually the same slide that we're looking to use for other topics, enhancements, familiarity with the project. This is, what's in orange, is the existing sidewalks, bike paths, that exist as they are currently. Salt Creek Greenway Trail, which also then comes out on the middle, continues up through the industrial park up to other communities. A very important link through the area. You've got on-street bike paths along Middle, some sidewalk along Wooddale, and then up here in this area in Elk Grove Village, there're sidewalks along those roadways. That's what exists currently. The next slide, in blue, is going to show what the tollway is going to build. Again, as I mentioned on Wooddale, they will build that on the bridge. They're going to do some work along Route 53, because of a complete streets policy along state highways. Excuse me, Route 83. What's shown along here on Middle, in orange and blue, well, that's existing, and that's also proposed, as they do the improvements there, they'll reestablish what is in that area. One of the features that they are doing that they wouldn't normally, is a bike path, at their expense, they'll do from Wooddale Road over to approximately Top Gulf. at their expense, they'll do from Wooddale Road over to approximately Top Gulf. The reason they're doing that at their expense is, what they're actually doing there is their, the existing Thorndale Avenue pavement is going to become the North Frontage Road, and there's enough pavement there to use it as a bike path. So for virtually no cost for restriping the existing pavement, they will put that path in. That's one of the exceptions to the typical policy.
Mayor?
And Thorndale going to Top Gulf, basically that's going to be a two-way, I heard talk of two lanes, one lane each way, east and west, one east, one west.
From?
Or is it two lanes each way? From Middle to Top Gulf?
From Middle Boulevard, west to Top Gulf, it's two lanes, one lane each way.
Okay, so it's not going to be?
A buffer area, and then the bike path is separated from the roadway. Okay? But that's reusing existing pavement. These are improvements that are at tollway expense, no local expense at this time. The next slide I'm going to show you is going to show kind of all the potential enhancements that we have thought about, looked at, talked with staff, looked at prior recommendations, prior documents and such. That's everything out there, but that's not actually what we recommend that Wooddale pursue doing at this time. In purple, you'll see some additional items. You know, along Wooddale Road, there's a fairly short distance to connect existing sidewalk to the bridge across, connect up on this side. There's some logic in, now you've completed a pedestrian network all the way around there providing another loop. Along the south side, there's a potential to put a path that could tie into some regional paths, long-term plan along Route 83, that could run all the way along here, parallel to the Frontage Road. Okay? And also under, along Lively Boulevard, under the bridge. Okay? Those are different ideas that could be completed. And one last one is over at the west end. It's adjacent to the Top Gulf facility, kind of from the existing path that would end about here, up to the existing sidewalk along Prospect Avenue. Those are the total that we have seen, as I mentioned, staff, various documents such for pedestrian ideas along this corridor. Some of those, we don't recommend that you do at this time or in conjunction with the project. And that's the next slide I'll go to, and I can explain why.
You keep on saying staff. Who is staff? Our city staff?
We've met with John Forrest, with Rich Gallus. We've talked with manager Mermis.
I, excuse?
Go ahead.
I really have a problem with this, because there's no, again, there's no, no one from this, it goes back to putting someone on this staff to talk about this, someone from up here. Who knows best about this community than the aldermen here? Mr. Gallus doesn't even live here, he can't even get here for a flood. We have, we have, we have, John?
Point of order.
Yeah.
I mean, let's be realistic here. Let's, we're talking about money here.
Right. Excuse me, didn't we make some kind of a note saying that we were going to get a steering committee? Jeff, is that? Oh, Jeff.
Yeah, that's one of the goals. We're waiting for that committee to be appointed. Until then, this is similar to any other staff presentation recommendation. Where your team, we come up with ideas, we present them to you, you add to the ideas, you vote on it, we don't vote on it. We present you information, you provide input. So it's really no different than another project. Until we get a steering committee together, we're giving you brainstorming ideas.
Okay, all right. I agree, but we are going to be putting together a steering committee soon.
I can't put together a steering committee. That's, the mayor appoints committee members, staff doesn't do that.
Then I'll ask the mayor.
My impression was, we still had some time before we started making some of these decisions. Now, tonight, tonight, we're not really making the decisions, are we? I mean, I'm not, explain to me?
He's asking for direction. For tomorrow.
What we're looking at is general interest, baseline-type improvements. Yes or no, does, is the city interested in doing more, taking advantage of the opportunity of Elgin O'Hare, doing more improvements, or just accepting what the tollway is proposing to do? If, for example, the direction is to do some of the, you'd like to pursue further some of the additional improvements, that's how we'll convey the information to the tollway. The cost estimates on here are ours. They're based on the available information. As the tollway engineers revise the plans, the first thing we would ask them for is, yes, Wooddale is interested in possibly doing these additional enhancements at these locations. Please provide us more information on the exact costs. Just because we're asking for it doesn't mean we've obligated the city to do it at this time. But it is one of the comments, first comments that they're looking for responses back for. Understanding, working within the existing committee structure until the steering committee is established, we thought this was one of the topics that we could work through and try to get some responses back to the tollway to show them that we are trying to address, trying to meet their timelines.
Alderman Woods?
A couple of things. First, to city manager's, Mermis's comment, in all fairness, this isn't quite like any other projects we've done. This is a once-in-a-lifetime project. So some of the apprehension and fear that I think all the aldermen up here have is things are going by and we're not having any input into it. I appreciate what you're saying, and, you know, and if that's 100% the case, it's almost a question of why do we need a presentation if nothing we say matters? I would think we could all agree that, yes, we want to have input. I think that's what's been said, but it seems like we're, when I looked at, and I was at your last meeting at Itasca too, and talked to some people over there, there's a lot of things happen, there's happening, there's a lot of moving parts. And there is a fairly expansive timeframe that all this is going to happen over, but we all know in these big projects, things said early are things that get done. So again, I think I'll restate everybody's concern up here, that we're not getting input necessary to make the decisions we're being asked to make, even though you say that our decision really doesn't mean anything today.
Well, one of the, at this point, what I do want to make very clear is, this is ideas from some people. This is when we want your ideas. Are there other locations along this corridor type of stuff? This is, this is an interactive way to start with something to provide some, provide you what's going to happen as a baseline that the tollway will do, explain what else, to be thinking and talking about what can be done in addition to that. So we welcome comments, suggestions, do more, do less, how about a different location type of thing. That's what we want to hear.
You know, I think what we want to hear, and I think maybe this is something that we can pretty much solve quickly, is if we can appoint some aldermen to this steering committee. And I would ask the mayor, when you think we can possibly get this done so we can move forward without not feeling that we're not getting any input on this? Mayor?
Well, number one, I mean, I read the memo, it says 0 to $400,000. Talking to some of the aldermen up here, you know, they want to make sure that this area is looking good. Basically, it's our gateway, master corridor plan, industrial park, everything. Now, everybody wants to make sure it's looking nice. You know, some of the suggestions maybe are good, and I guess staff would recommend some suggestions to whoever's on the steering committee, or let's say not steering committee, but who's on the committee just to give some input. We can do that next week, no problem, but basically, you want a consensus, do we want to move forward? I think the council wants to move forward, but we'd like some input. You know, did anything even go to our streetscape committee who handles this? You know, I think they should have been involved a little bit.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I don't think we need to push the panic alarm for five-alarm fire tonight. We can certainly get people involved. You have to understand, Mr. Mark Court's working on a deadline. It's not like we're purposely withholding information from anybody. We get a steering committee in place that would have, you know, one or two of the elected officials on the steering committee to attend some of these internal meetings, and then we would essentially still be coming to you with the information, just added information from two steering committee members. So.
Okay.
And I, again, I can't, staff cannot appoint committee members.
I'm going to take a couple more questions, and then we're going to let you finish your presentation. Alderman Woods?
Just, just quickly, I mean, I don't want this to be adversarial. I think this is a team effort. I've tried to go to every meeting that I could go to, because every time I go, I learn a little bit more. I mean, this is a pretty big and complex, and I can't devote 40 hours a week to it. Unfortunately, the city won't pay me. But that being said, I hate to get behind the eight ball, and then, you know, we let another 60 days go by, and then you come and go, okay, now we're ready to make decisions. You know, that's my concern.
What we're at is, this is a 30% design, 30% concept design for the entire corridor. The tollway's asking for some initial input so they can refine their plans. What they will submit yet in the future will be what are called 60% complete plans, 95% complete, and 100% complete. When you get to 100% complete, it's going out to bid about a month later. Okay? The earlier that we can provide the input, the more streamlined the process goes. It's a lot easier to add things in at this point than one of the later stages, just, you know, just before they're going out to bidding, oh, we want to add something. That's why we're looking for the early input, the early interest in this. One of the, one of the things I'd like to, if I could, cover, explain, the memo had the 0 to 400,000. That's no cost to the village, excuse me, the city. That's what the tollway's going to do. That is 400,000. This is what we're recommending, and I'll explain why we're recommending not to do some of the certain projects at this time, and it's a very considerable cost difference. Path that goes from Wooddale Road all the way along the Frontage Road eventually to 83, and a portion along 83 that's in the city, this area in here is part of a future redevelopment plan. Would highly recommend to not put that path in at this time. Do that in conjunction with the redevelopment. You have the opportunity to work with developers to pick up the cost. A path like that has opportunities for grant funding, grant applications for that funding. I would strongly recommend not doing that portion. The other pieces that we show on here, over at near Top Gulf and completing the Wooddale, are in the range of about $80,000. So what we want to do with the $400,000 is tell you about all the possibilities that we're aware of, listen to additional input of other ideas, but then bring it back to what are the priorities to be done at this time. And I did forget, Lively Boulevard, under the bridge also makes sense to complete at this time. So, smallest to largest, and then back to what makes a lot of sense for the community from our perspective, to be able to combine this within a tollway project. The reason to do, some of the logic behind doing some of these, if you want to go out in the future, you want to go out and add a path, there's permitting issues. Now you're going to be building it under a tollway bridge. You got issues like that. So there's some logic in doing it now during construction, getting an area completed, and then wait for the future redevelopment opportunities to complete the majority of those, of those path improvements. One of the things I do want to mention on that path, for this entire distance along here, the tollway will actually build the subgrade adjacent to the Frontage Road wide enough for a future path. As long as they don't have to acquire additional right-of-way, they'll do the basic earthwork. In the future, you have to come back, strip the topsoil off, put the path in. So there's actually a lot of stuff that they are setting up for future success and completion of some of these additional projects. There's certain points, it makes more sense to take advantage of the opportunities now. That large section, no, really, because of potential grant opportunities, redevelopment, I would strongly recommend to defer that, but consider the other pieces to complete some of the links here and the loops along there.
Go ahead, Rich.
Just to put this in perspective, I mean, I can understand Alderman Woods's and Alderman Wesley's concerns. Those are valid concerns. I think what we're asking you tonight, and what we discussed between staff and HR Green, was very basic and simple question. If you are comfortable with the plan that the tollway has put forward at a cost-neutral perspective, that's one decision. I think another decision would be, if you'd like us to pursue enhancements and work with a steering committee to advance some option that you think is in the best interest of the city, that's really what we're asking. We're not asking for, please choose the decision that Scott or HR Green believes is appropriate. It's what does the city of Wooddale want to consider? Do they want to consider what the tollway's offering? Or do we want to, do we want to look at some form of upgrade that makes sense?
Alderman Winger?
After taking us through and hearing what you have to say, that it sounds like the $80,000 approach concurring with the suggestions so far, I'm certainly in favor of it, and I believe we should move forward with that in mind, that we're going to be planning on doing that portion of the enhancements.
Do you want to make that a motion?
That'll be my motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
And I'll take a couple more questions, and then we'll call the vote. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
So, the motion on the floor, is this earmark $80,000 on this project right now?
No.
No.
No, the motion on the floor was to see if we want to proceed with looking at upgrades. That's what we want to do. We want to give them directions. Do we want to upgrade this, or do we want to just take what the tollway has to offer?
But, let me ask you this question. When do you?
Eugene.
When do you have to let tollway know that we are going to go that option?
Tomorrow is the initial deadline.
Okay.
Now, we can request an extension on that if necessary. They grant those ones so far. Although we can, the responses can be raised that... Although, we can, the responses can be raised that we do want to keep going to Alderman to consider further pedestrian enhancements, additional details to follow.
I'd rather, I'd rather go that way, because right now, it is almost saying that we are willing to put eighty thousand dollars.
Which way do you mean, Eugene?
I'd rather wait, send a letter saying that we would like the extension. But I didn't know we asked for extension already. That's the first time I heard, we asked for extension. When would the extension granted?
I don't know. Jeff?
I think what we'd like to reiterate is, tonight, we're looking for some direction on, are you interested in this? If we're interested, then the tollway will, you know, further to design for options for us to, you know, move forward down the line. We're not committed until it's time to be committed. If you're not interested in pedestrian paths at all, then why would we tell the tollway we're interested? But if you're interested in it, they'll advance it along, give us more information, give a chance for the steering committee to get together and figure out the enhancements that you're interested in. So, I'm unclear as to how anybody thinks we're committing to anything, other than interest in a topic.
I'm hearing a motion out here on the floor.
Eugene, I'm going to take just one more question, because we're just beating a dead horse right now. And I think we, we understand, and I do appreciate exactly everything that you're saying. And I would like to see in the future, again, that we discuss about a committee. Right now, they're asking for a direction. I'm going to take one more question, Alderman Woods.
Mine is to clarify, I wasn't, maybe I'm not clear on what Alderman Winger's motion was, because I heard a monetary amount in there. Is that a component or not a component?
Sure, I'm glad you're asking for clarification, but it's not a monetary commitment that I'm, I'm suggesting we concur with that approach, your third, where the estimated cost was eighty thousand, but it was the exact items of, of what they want to do conversation on. So, it's not committing a dollar amount, it's just the paths that were shown on the screen, which was estimated at eighty thousand. Does that screen have a name? Maybe I could name, name it, instead of, call it the eighty thousand dollar screen.
That's the, the recommendations, and.
Yes, recommended, okay.
Not, the comments will not commit to a dollar value. They would suggest that we want to pursue further enhancements at certain locations, ask the tollway to refine their costs, and provide us additional information.
So, if I revise my motion to state that I motioned to concur with moving forward on discussion regarding the existing tollway baseline plus enhancement recommendations for bicycle and pedestrian, would, would that be adequate and clear to your recommendation?
That would cover those specific locations.
And who's second? Do you concur?
Yes, I second.
Does this get help?
I was gonna, can't we just go with the simple approach that they were talking about, that we're all interested in the improvements?
Right.
Enhancements, and it's, because it's not only the, the things that we talked about, but further enhancements. So, just in general.
Right, that we're interested in proceeding with enhancements.
Because then I'm on board.
Okay. Do you want to?
Do they need a motion? Do you need a motion?
Right, just need a direction.
Well, we have one on the floor already. So, we just want to update what, basically, we're interested in proceeding to see what the updates are, are going to be offered, and what they're, what they're going to be? Is that pretty much what?
We came to you for some direction on whether or not you're interested in pedestrian enhancements. And if you're interested in pedestrian enhancements, we can relay that to the tollway, and then fine tune them as we move along.
All right, so.
Okay, so, Alderman's motion to that.
One more question, Mayor?
Jeff, the enhancements, I mean, I know you had, you had the plans back here, I think the council saw them. You showed us some pictures about possible improvements with landscaping and all. I mean, this is all part of it. I thought it was with the intergovernmental agreement, when that was coming forward, then we would have those discussions on what we want, what we don't want.
Jeff?
Again, as Scott mentioned, we're at the beginning portion of this, the thirty percent plan. So, what we've been doing is we've been, whatever information we get back from the council, keeping a tally as the far, as, as what we're submitting to, to the tollway. Keeping a running tally, asking for more information, and then, down the line, when we have our more information, then you would make your final decisions. Then projects would go out for bid, then sixty and ninety percent plans would be done.
Right, but I think the only thing we're asking, Jeff, is, is that we have at least one or two representatives in on, you know, some of these discussions. Other than that, I don't think there's anything we can really do, except take a vote. Mayor, one more.
So, are we voting that we have interest on enhancements, but we're not really committing to anything? Ron, you seem like you want to be talking back there. You keep grabbing the microphone. I just want to make sure, you know, because we have the intergovernmental agreement that's supposed to be coming forward, I keep hearing about the landscaping. You know, I'm a little concerned that nothing even went. And I know we're right at the beginning, but, you know, streetscape only meets once, once a month, but some things should start flowing our way, so we get some general information. That's all I'm looking for.
Go ahead, Ron.
For those of you that do not know me, I'm Ron Crawl, I'm with H.R. Green. I'm also the Phase One Project Manager for the Elgin O'Hare on behalf of the Illinois Department of Transportation. What Scott's presenting here is one of many enhancements. This is the one that right now needs a decision, are you interested or not? Moving forward, landscaping, aesthetics to bridge abutments, aesthetic light poles, traffic signal preemption, there's going to be a laundry list of items that are going to come. In the pecking order right now, the tollway is interested because of a wide right-of-way footprint, bicycle path, and pedways.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Ron, I mean, you just mentioned a few items there, so, you know, basically, the, this pedestrian and bike system already went from zero to four hundred thousand, possibly eighty thousand there. Then you got the street lighting, traffic signals, the bridge, if you want a different type of rail. All these things could, you know, I mean, we could look at a million dollars.
Absolutely, and what's going to happen is, we're going to show you some of the things that you can consider. We're going to show you the, the beginning of not doing anything, and this is what's going to be provided, to the high end, and then what we would recommend. In this particular instance, for the bike and ped, you saw the zero, the, the tollway's doing a lot of things by extending bridges, providing a wider bridge for Wooddale to provide the connection. And what you have to consider with the bike and ped, is when the Elgin O'Hare goes in, you're creating a physical barrier separating north and south. And you're going to have a finite number of portals to connect pedestrians and bicycles to the north side of Wooddale or to Elk Grove. And those are going to be Mittel, there's going to be Wooddale, Lively, and eighty-three. So, the pieces that were recommended, that took you into the eighty thousand dollar ballpark, were made, let's go on and put them in there, because these connections are made. You don't have to go through the permitting process. They're filling the gap-type pieces. Filling the gap from a sidewalk pedestrian network that'll take you up to the bridge, and will get you to the service road to get you to Topgolf. That's why those pieces were recommended in this particular instance. And by committing to, you're interested, when, when the tollway's consultant gets this information, there, there's a ballpark figure for eighty thousand dollars, they're going to start drilling down, and they're going to give you a much more specific cost. And that's going to constantly be refined as the sixty percent plans come in, the ninety-five percent plans come in.
Okay, one more question, Alderman Woods?
Yeah, the, I have to hold it to one? The, yeah, the sixty percent plans. I thought I heard from some people that those were almost ready, going to be out shortly.
The lights are lighting there around that.
So. Right, so that's essentially right around the corner. So, again, just.
Sixty percent?
Yeah.
And understand.
Again, my apprehension that.
Understand, by, by committing to being interested, we could be interested all the way through the hundred percent plans that goes out to bid, and then you get bad bids, don't include it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm interested, Ron, you had me at hello. Pardon? I said, I'm interested, you had me at hello.
Okay, let's take a vote, please, real call.
What's the motion on the floor?
You want to?
Do you want to read it?
Right.
It, yes, recommended. That you're interested in pedestrian enhancements as recommended. Right.
That amounts up.
But why is the recommended still in? They're, they're saying they haven't really recommended anything.
Well, so what are we doing? What's, what's, what do you want us to?
If I could just add one item in here, the tollway has a schedule, thirty percent, sixty, ninety-five, a hundred percent. The tollway is probably one of the best agencies there is about getting projects done on time. And I don't know of a better way to say this than, this project will happen whether we say anything collectively or not. If we don't say anything, what's going to get built is what the tollway will build. This is our opportunity. We have to react and give information when the tollway is requesting it. Hence, the reason for some of the schedules and timeframes that we are, that we are talking about. And I actually want to cover a couple things in next slides, once we're done with sidewalk, to give you a heads up of other items. But this is a schedule, this is the hand that we all collectively have been dealt with the tollway's schedule. We have to, we have to react and provide comments when they're looking for them.
Thank you. Let's take a.
Wait, is the presentation done?
No, we're, we're just, we're voting just on the pedestrian and bike path.
That's it? The rest of the, the rest of the presentation is just give you a heads up of what's coming in future meetings.
Right, and we don't have to make a decision on anything else, other than this tonight?
Correct.
Real call?
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley? Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Okay, Scott, go ahead, continue.
Thank you. This is just the, in text form, what the initial recommendations had been. We'll keep the comments general, as we discussed. What are some things coming up that we anticipate bringing back to the appropriate committee? Whether that's steering committee, whether it's planning and zoning, whether it's streets, whatever. We'll work together to get these topics to the appropriate committee. But these are some of the next items that we anticipate bringing forward. Again, because of the tollway's schedule. What do we want to do for traffic signal enhancements? Do we want the bear basic galvanized? Do we want it painted black? Is there a local color? That type of options. Emergency vehicle preemption, do we want it everywhere? That would be a local cost to put it in where it doesn't currently exist. Roadway light?
Yeah.
Wait a minute. The emergency vehicle enhancement for the fire department, the police officers? I thought, the meaning I attended, the I dot says we'll put them in automatically.
If they currently exist, the tollway will relocate them to the new system. If they're taking a location where there's one signal, like would be the case of Wooddale, and because of the new, new configuration, there'll be two sets of signals, one at each frontage road, they will pick up the cost of installing that additional one. Very likely, there's going to be very minimal cost for emergency vehicle preemption. But they want to, one of the questions they want to know is, does the local community want it everywhere? Type of thing. So, there's not a, not a large cost component to that. Roadway lighting, again, the standard galvanized lights, upgrades type of stuff. These are all opportunities that can be taken care of for the incremental cost difference from the basic to upgrade to something. Those first items, we potentially would be coming back here in about two weeks. Utility improvements, there's a lot of sanitary sewer, there's a lot of water main that goes through this corridor. The reason for this, for the aggressive schedule coming back to you with these items is, we're going to be getting sixty percent.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Jeff, in the sake of moving things forward, I suggest we have some type of workshop. I mean, now, and again, in two weeks, you guys are going to come with the recommendation. The council, I believe, wants enhancements, they want improvements, but could we have like a workshop, either on a Thursday before regular meetings, or some Saturday, and show us what those differences are, instead of, boom, drop it to us, and tomorrow, we can, by the way, tomorrow, we're going to tell the tollway.
Jeff?
Can we get that? Because I think that'll put everybody a little more at ease.
Well, yeah, that's, that's one hundred percent for sure, we can do that. But keep in mind, I don't want anybody to think staff is ramming things down anybody's throat. The tollway gives us a schedule, they don't give us a document until a certain day, and then we have a week or two to react, so it's not like we're just dropping the bomb on you. But sure, we can have workshops whenever you guys want, not a problem. We're working on their timeframe, not making up a timeframe out of the blue.
And there are some of the items here, like the utility improvements. We're actually trying to get ahead of the, the game. They're not even going to tell us what they're going to do with moving sewer and water on the sixty percent cement. They're not even going to show that until the ninety-five percent cement. That is not when we want to start talking about changes, enhancements, and such. What we want to do is look at this, bring to you ideas to improve the system, so that we can proactively get that information to the tollway and get it in the designs as soon as possible.
So, Scott, what it sounds like we're saying is, is that the tollway is not going to give us a lot of leeway as far as showing us, like, for instance, if we want to upgrade the railings, do we have pictures of what the, that looks like? And, in other words, so if we can make a decision ahead of time and say, okay, instead of spending fifty, we like the, the twenty-five thousand dollar one?
Yes, we can provide exhibits of railings which are acceptable, and.
Well, I mean, that's just a, an example, but what I'm asking is, can we get pictures of all the different type of upgrades that are offered? Again, so we can make a, you know, a pretty good educated decision up here. And I know we're being rushed, and I know that you were explaining that they don't give you a lot of time before they, you know, ask you for a decision. But ahead of time, can we get information to the council to see what the new lights can look like, and maybe what that cost is? So, if we can kind of spring forward a little bit, as far as, let, let us see what these updates are. You know, instead of making them, you know, a decision now, you know, do you understand what I'm asking?
I do, and we'll, we'll work with the manager to figure out the best way to, to do that, provide that.
Any other questions? All right, Jeff?
Since everybody's very interested in, in getting started right away, we can do workshop next Thursday, we can do a workshop next Saturday, maybe we get some direction today.
Sure.
So, we're not playing catch-up, so we can get started as soon as anybody wants to.
Someone have a question in here?
I had a question, that goes to the time thing. I don't, I don't think that you guys are hiding, I know that everybody's got a timeframe, but I've gone to three different, four different meetings in four different communities, and it seems like we're talking about things, although we're not making any decisions, but we're not involved in it. I just have to make it clear, because it doesn't seem to be clear. And all we want to do is be involved. We're not saying anybody's doing anything wrong, we're not saying anything's being mismanaged or anything. We want to be involved, it's our.
It's our community. We all live here. This is a big project. It only happens once. We do want to make enhancements. And I think I'm speaking for everybody up here when I said that. Thank you.
Yeah, so let's get together and decide when a workshop is convenient for all of us. Would we all like to attend this workshop? No, we don't know yet. We're asking about a workshop for all.
That's for the entire council this way.
Right.
So, you know.
Go ahead, Mayor. What did you say?
Basically, you know, we said four hundred thousand just for bikeway and cut it down to eighty. If you go through the whole list, sanitary, all the utilities, roadway lighting, emergency, I mean, we could easily push this thing up to a million dollars in full and maybe bring it down to five hundred thousand, but I'm sure everybody would be very interested and see what it is.
Scott?
If I could respond to that, just a clarification. Utility relocations, the tollway is picking up the full expense of what they have to do. Local expense would be upgrades, capacity enhancements type of thing.
Okay.
So, that's a very large ticket that the tollway is picking up on moving existing utilities.
You know, and something like what you just said, Scott, would be something that we would find out at the workshop. And again, you know, not to continue to repeat what everyone else is saying up here, if Jeff and Mayor can get together and the council and decide what a good date and time for a workshop would be. Rich?
Brief comment. When we prepared the request for proposal to solicit these services, one of the items in there was to conduct a strategic planning session that was designed to try to flush out some ideas from the council as a whole. Because of the way the project is moving and in the speed of which it's moving, we're kind of conducting that strategic session as each one of these items is required for us to communicate back to the tollway. So, I just want to make sure that everyone understood that that provision is in the contract with H.R. Green. That is the concept. We just, it sounds like now, we want to make sure that we do that with some expediency, and we'll work through the manager to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I think we want to be a part of picking out the flowers. You know what I mean? It's as simple as that. You know, we want to be the ones that decide what streetlight upgrade. And we want to see, are there four different lights that we can choose from? You know, and I think that, I think our input is important because we do represent the community.
I could offer a suggestion. What we found this works fairly well on this workshop working session is using probably a base map like this, and we bring out the highlighters and the crayons. It's, and draw it. We collectively get ideas from that. It's very informal, and it's.
Sorry about that. Did everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. It's informal. It is that working type session. And we just draw, and we doodle, and we come up with ideas collectively from everyone.
Okay.
Just a bunch of base maps like this, and for different topics, and away we go.
Is that what we're looking for, council? Is that a direction we should take? Mayor?
Yeah, I think, I think this is, like Art said, this is a once-in-a-lifetime for us. We want to make sure we do it right. We want to make sure we have the enhancements. Question is, how much of those enhancements can we afford?
Right.
And I understand the utilities, right, if they're paying for moving some of it, but if we want to upgrade, upsize, whatever.
Yeah, and I think that workshop should help us all get a clearer view on that. Art, one more question, and we'll.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'll enjoy the crayons. Those are always fun. One of my concerns, and I think that the mayor touched on it too, is to get the menu or list of things. I mean, as much as we want to affect change or the things that we can affect on here, there's certain things that we have to do as a municipality, as a city, to grow that area also. And this goes to the utility. So, that twelve-inch water main, we might not have a choice but to upgrade that to a twenty-four-inch water main or whatever it is, because that makes the most sense. So, we don't, what I'm saying is, if we spend four hundred thousand and then three hundred thousand, then we get to the water main at ninety-five percent, and we have no thousands left to spend, we did a disservice to the community. So, if we could, to Scott's point, get ahead of the curve, that's all we're looking to do. I think you summed it up with that statement. Thank you.
Scott, you want to proceed with your presentation?
Sure. Just about finished here, but this is, just going back to the slide, these are ideas that we can work on enhancements of. This list can be added to. This is just what we came up with. Whatever else you, you know, come up with, we'll add it, and we can consider it. Towards the end of the presentation, just about finished. Just a reminder, upcoming meetings, next Monday, there is another local advisory committee meeting held at the, just up the road here at the courtyard. And then they, they just scheduled the next one, that's June tenth.
What time is that one at the courtyard?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty?
And then, under the dates and frequencies, steering committee, design coordination, as we just talked about, the workshop type of thing. So, we'll get dates set for that. And that was the end of the presentation.
Okay. Well, thank you, Scott. Any other questions before we move on? No? Okay. Items to be considered at future meetings? Final pay request to Plody Construction, May-June? And final pay request to Thorne Electric, May-June? And I'd like to call for an adjournment? And any other items? First, I'm sorry. Any other items to be discussed? Art?
It's not another item, but I have a question on the final pay request for Thorne Electric, May-June. Why do these, I mean, they seem like they're pushed out, you know, an extensive amount of time. Is that them getting paid late? Is that on time? Are there things that aren't finished? It just seems like it's.
Scott?
They have not submit their final invoice to me yet in writing, in all the documentation. Thank you.
Art Wesley?
When's the punch list gonna be done for Plody?
Rich?
That punch list will be discussed in executive session as part of a closeout of the project.
I have a little problem with that, because I have.
Right? If this is an executive session.
No, I have residents complaining. It doesn't, when I have residents complaining, it's not an executive session. He's, maybe he's talking about a bill or something, but I'm talking about work that needs to be done. I mean, I almost twisted my ankle at a resident's house, because the sod is sunk so much, and it's not being repaired. And I want to know when it's gonna be done.
All right.
I mean, that's not, that's not an executive session question. It's safety.
Okay, right. Thank you. I appreciate your input on that. Rich, you want to answer?
I would be happy if you have a specific item on the punch list to verify when it was gonna be completed. What I've been told right now is that by next Friday, all those items are intended to be completed.
Okay. Can we move on? Eugene?
I was informed today by Clark Mosquito that our rep is no longer, will be our rep, Tom Peset, will be leaving Clark Mosquito's, and a new guy that will be taking over will be George. So, I would like him to come and introduce himself to us.
Okay. Rich, is that something you can set up for us?
So, he has left, and we have a new rep.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anything else?
No, I was gonna make a speech later today, but I will hold off on that.
Okay.
Speech till later.
All right. Anything else? Or call for an adjournment? Motion for adjournment?
Second.
Adjourned.